Okay Frank, we're good to go.
Okay, this is the regular meeting of the Arts and Culture Commission. Today is July 15, 2021. Seeing a quorum, this meeting is officially called to order. Madam Recording Secretary, please roll call.
Fran Gutierrez.
Here.
Robin McNair.
Here.
Fernando Olivares.
Here.
Jose Hernandez.
Here.
Deborah Russell.
Here.
Indigo Boo. Andrea Harris.
Here.
Thank you, we have a quorum. And just an announcement for the members of the public that our YouTube channel is not working to watch the meeting live. So what I'll do is that you can stay here in Zoom, but I will close down your, if you can close down your video and mute yourself, please. And I see if you want to make a comment, please raise your hand and I will let the chair know that you would like to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are public comment. Does the public have any comments they wish to share with the commission? You have three minutes to express your comment. Any public comment?
Okay, we have first Alicia Rojas.
Did I unmute myself? I did. Good evening, Arts Commission, Tram, Gabby, Blanca. I wanted to touch upon some things quickly. I'm Alicia Rojas, local artist. I wanted to share some really good news. I am part of volunteer committee for the Tijuana neighborhood for the effort of La Raza mural restoration. Commissioner Fernando will be sharing some other things with you as well on this. We have raised $14,000 in cash so far and we've raised $10,000 in in-kind donations. This is the 30th year of this mural, so we're working really hard with a dedicated group of community leaders to get this going. And we're asking the city and the Arts Commission to please share our fundraising letter in their email list. So thank you for that. And Commissioner Fernando will speak a little bit about that. Also, there will be an art show, Colombia Resiste, Una Noche de Amor, Arte y Resistencia, next Friday night. It's a grassroots effort. Commissioner Jose will be speaking on that. We'll have three local artists, Andres Felipe, Jenny Bernadine, myself, all Colombian. And we're raising funds for protesters and indigenous groups on the line with everything that's happened in our native country. Also, I'd like to share the great news that I was one of the artists chosen for the Poderos, for the National Fitness Campaign for the Parks and Rec. One of the eight artists that will be having their art display in the fitness installation. And I'm really proud of it. I'm going to be bringing the Poderosas, which is art inspired by women of color like Dolores Huerta, Silvia Mendez, Nature, and all kinds of beautiful things. So I'm really excited and I just wanted to share that news. And also, my last news is I'm super proud and honored to be a newly Grand Central resident artist. I am working on a new work and exhibition that will be coming in the next couple of years. This work is going to be supported by the Underworld Foundation grant, who they just funded Grand Central for the third time. So, and lastly, I just want to say thank you to the Art Walk Ad Hoc Committee for all their work. Please let's make sure that we give that feedback to Downtown Inc. I know that we're all anxiously waiting about what's going on with that. And let's continue to push our city councils and our city manager to fund the master plan. They funded it for only five years. It was 10 years. We really need to get that funded again. Please let me know if there's anything I can do to help that effort. Okay, that's it. And thank you to Jenny Bernadine for doing amazing work at Art Walk for the last seven years with her heart and her love, bringing amazing bands and amazing vendors and local vendors on there. So we love you and we support you. And aquí estamos y no nos vamos. Gracias. That's it. I try to be quick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have another, do we have somebody else with public comment?
Yes. Breath of Fire Latina Theater.
Yes, hi. I can't unstart my video. So, oh, here we go. Okay. Hello, everyone. I'm Sara Guerrero, the founding artistic director of Breath of Fire Latina Theater Ensemble. We are resident artists also. And so, by the way, I just want to applaud and congratulate Alicia Rojas in all of her efforts. So aplauso, aplauso, aplauso. The murals are incredible. And it's so, it's so lovely to see the opportunity to see work done like that and that to see it tour. Anyhow, so just wanted to update with, update you all. We've been online since the pandemic. We haven't been allowed to be in our space at Grand Central Arts Center. We are following the guidelines of Cal State Fullerton. So we are still remaining online as far as our programming, which has been really successful. We have seniors, people from both coast in Orange County on our, with our playwriting group. Of course, we would love to do our work in person. But just recently, we hosted our first in-life project, which is a partnership with the University of Massachusetts Amherst and with Professor Alicia Gonzalez. And we worked together to devise a new body of work called Olvidados about repatriation of Mexican-Americans that were forced out, forced out of California and all over the United States when they were scapegoated. And, and many of the, many of the children suffered who were residents here and just people themselves, you know, they were, they were forced to return or they were forced to move to Mexico when it wasn't even their home. Anyway, this story was, was told through traditional corridos and other forms of music and Moises Vázquez is our, our music director. And so we had our first live performance. And the last time we presented live was in 2020 Boca de Oros closing event, also at Alta Baja. So to have it there was very emotional, monumental, and then to have families and friends present and have an incredible cast, some people from the community, other artists that we've developed relationships online. And so what we will be doing is bringing this play to the university to do a production as well as part of their 2020, their 2122 season over there in Massachusetts. And our hope is to bring it here to Orange County and toured as well. So, and hopefully we can find partnerships and funding to do that. Because as you know, doing live theater is, requires a community, a village. And then with that said, we are continuing our programming online. All of our programming is always offered free to our community at no expense, and no one is ever turned away for lack of experience. And in the time that we have been in the pandemic, over 20 plays, full plays have been developed. And that doesn't even count the short one act plays. Our playwright's work has been picked up all over. Our literary director, her opening night at American Mariachi is tonight, Diana Burbano, who has been instrumental in our time and our work. We, we do miss being in the downtown area. And again, having the opportunity to be home in our home was such an uplifting experience. And we recognize that today LA has brought back the mandated mask wearing. And we recognize that the uptick of the, the variant is going up. And so, wearing mask is not an issue with us. Being, making sure that our community and our participants are always safe is always at, at, you know, in our, in our, the, one of the things that we always say at theater, safety first. So if, you know, and so we're going to continue our programming online.
Sarah, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay, my time is up. But anyway, breathoffire.org.
Thank you. We have Mike Limon.
Yes. Good evening, everybody. First and foremost, fantastic work, everyone. This is my first meeting with you all. My name is Mike Limon. I'm the Executive Director of Orange County Educational Arts Academy right down on Broadway. You can't miss us with the 7,500 square foot mural that we just installed in November. The, that same week, the county actually went into purple. And so we were lucky to be able to, to make this happen during the pandemic. But essentially, we've been working on a mural for probably 15, 16 years that we've been around in Santana. And, you know, talk about perseverance, right? And so I partnered up with Brian Peterson and we had been trying to work to find a donor to make this mural come to life. And so through one of his colleagues that he went to design school with, she had a vision to construct a unity mural. And that was her theme. And that's all she wanted featured on the mural. And so Brian came to us with the relationship that we built and we decided to make this happen within two weeks. And so basically, we rolled out a survey to our parents and students and staff as far as what they wanted to see featured on the mural. And so seven days later, the 7,500 square foot mural was, was developed and installed. And so just wanted to take a moment to talk about the work that it takes for a village to construct projects like this. Someone talked about this earlier, right? And so I just wanted to share a little bit about the process and the perseverance and tapping into the community because you never know when funding is going to come available, right? And then if you've got a vision and the can-do mentality, you can make things like the mural happen, right? And I also wanted to take a moment to talk a little bit about a new project that we're going to start on Monday. I don't know the exact square footage of this project, but it's nearly 10,000 square feet. And the rendering right behind me is the, the rendering of what's going to happen on Monday. You'll see Silvia Mendez featured to my right, I believe. And so one of our goals was to ensure that we took learning outside of the classroom into our playground. We're an urban school. We're not a traditional school with plenty of grass and access to plenty square footage. And so we wanted to make sure that we maximize our urban space. The beauty of being in downtown Santana is we've got folks like you that have subject matter expertise to tap into, right? But we wanted to ensure students had access to learning anywhere they're at in our facilities. And so like I mentioned, we start on Monday. And so we will be done by next Friday, which is kind of insane to construct a 10,000 square foot in seven days. But those of you that know Brian Peterson, he's fantastic. He's transforming Santa Ana into a fantastic place to visit. Just today, Orange Coast Magazine named OSEA as the top place to visit in Orange County. So if you haven't had a chance to see our mural, please stop by. We will be having an invitation-only ribbon cutting on August 3rd, which is a Tuesday. Right now, it's slated to be at 2:00 PM. I might change it because OSHA is having their back to school probably that week. So I need to work through that. My name again is Mike Limon, Executive Director of Orange County Educational Arts Academy, also known as OSEA. My email's mlimon@oceaa.org if you would like to learn more about how to make these things happen. And since I still have a little bit of time, we're also doing a third mural in our lobby. There was this group of young high school students from Irvine that reached out and built their own nonprofit called Color, Color Street, I say Color Street. And they basically completed that mural on Saturday. And so follow us on social media at osea_santana to check out that mural as well. And it's pretty cool to see young talent have a passion for art and, you know, get a blank canvas like us at OSEA to be able to practice their talent and inspire young people for many years to come. So thank you for having me today.
Thank you, Mike.
Public comments?
Yeah, we have a few more. Nancy Warser. Go ahead, Nancy. If you need to, there you go.
Hello, everyone. I'm so happy to be here. And I just want to introduce myself. My name is Nancy Warser Brady. I am the Director of Education and Community Engagement for Backhouse Dance. And I know many of you, Robin McNair, Andrea, and Tram. Backhouse Dance is Orange County's leading contemporary dance company founded by Jennifer Backhouse back in 2003. And what I wanted to share with you today is that we are so excited, with some funding from the city of Santa Ana, we have launched a program, a creative dance and ballet program for youth called Moving Santa Ana. And like many of us or all of us, we still may be working remotely, but we've held the programs, these dance classes for ages three to five, six to eight, and nine to 12, two days a week. And we've been in virtual mode since April, but we've just opened up now live classes indoors at El Salvador Community Center on Wednesday afternoons. And on Saturdays, we're at Memorial Park. We're supposed to be on the stage, but it's a little hot. So we're kind of in the shade under the trees. Backhouse Dance's mission and education and community engagement is to cultivate the next generation of dancers, of artists. These classes are fun. We have spaces still available. And we'd really like to spread the word that, as you know, dance is an essential art form. And, and everyone can dance. And these classes are, they're creative. They're meant to build skills. And they're mostly to use imagination. And we're, I'll send on information to everyone, but I'm just really here to share this information with you that we're doing these free creative dance classes. We will continue through the fall. So our next fall semester will begin in September and will run through December 18. And everyone is having a lot of fun. And we're really excited to be able to get out. At El Salvador, the classes are indoors and all of, everyone is wearing masks. In an outdoors, some of the, the young children are wearing masks also. We have two performances coming up, which are free, and all of you will be invited. I'll be getting you invitations August 5th at El Salvador and August 7th, which will be at Memorial Park. Bring some chairs and we'll all have a dance party afterwards. So we're thrilled to be able to have some funding to deepen our impact and work with all of you and the youth and community in the schools in Santa Ana. It's central to our mission. And we've been doing some virtual classes at the high school level as well. Hopefully, we'll continue to do those in the fall, maybe live. Thank you very much. And I continue to support what you're doing. Thank you so much for your efforts to deepen the arts in Santa Ana. It's very much needed. And we're here to work side by side with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Dawn Reese.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Thank you for the invitation by Deborah to join you. I wanted to share about a little update on the wooden floor and then also about our site-specific work that we're doing currently at our Main Street campus here in Santa Ana. So the Wooden Floor has been founded since 1983. We've served over 95,000 young people in the city of Santa Ana and 15,000, 15 other surrounding communities. And now we have two locations in Santa Ana, which we're super proud of. And we offer contemporary dance with academics, college and career readiness, and family services. And so we're a creative youth development organization. We're not a dance studio. We're really making sure that everyone really understands that. Our goal today are to transform young people from low-income communities through the power of dance and access to higher education. And since 2005, 100% of our seniors have graduated from the wooden floor and have immediately enrolled in higher education, which we're really proud about, especially within the pandemic. It's been a feat over 2020 and 2021, when the students have all been at home virtually. We today serve 475 students after school from third grade all the way through 12th grade. So our goal is that they're with us for 10 years, working with them and their parents to see a big, bright future for themselves, using this contemporary dance approach that really focuses on creativity, co-creation, really focuses on making sure that we're asking themselves to dig deep, what do they want for their lives? And how does that translate from their shared experiences that they have in the community? And how is that manifested through movement? And we really want to honor that, that they have in the world that they have. We also work with world-renowned choreographers that are shaping the genre of contemporary dance, that are introduced to all the wonderful aspects of Santa Ana. They stay with us generally for residencies over three and four month periods, and they get to be part of our cultural vibrancy we have here in Santa Ana. I'm also in the Board of Directors of the Santa Ana Chamber of Commerce. So I'm a big proponent also, the Santa Ana community that we have. We're also funded by the National Endowment for the Arts, California Arts Council. We've also received awards from MetLife. Also, today, we also just recently received the After School Alliance Award from, for our middle school programming, which comes with a $100,000 award over the next two years. And that's really to focus on our middle school programming, to ensure that our middle schoolers actually transfer into high school, which has never been a problem for us. But in some parts of the US, it is a problem. So our goal is to set a big, bold vision for our students. So tying to our current project, we're actually, I have our 30th annual concert here at our Main Street location. And I have Deborah's attending, trans attending, and I saw Robin was on the list as well. And I'd like to encourage all of you, and I'd be happy to have tickets with you. We're working with Steven Kaplowitz, who is a renowned choreographer in site-specific work. He was the Dean of Cal Arts. And he is working with us. He's been here in residency since the last six months. In a socially-distanced manner, we have 10, 10 spaces in our building that we've set a site-specific work in with media, visual art, and also music, live music compositions that were created just for this work. Our concerts are about $150,000, including all of the costumes that we prepare. So it's not like a child's recital that you might see, and you might attend every once in a while with your children. It's really a professional program that we put into the community. This is the first time since our founding, when we were in the, in the Santa Ana High School auditorium with our founder Beth Burns, that we've been in Santa Ana. We normally are in the Irvine Barclay Theater each year. So we're really proud of the fact that we can bring this type of art-making into Santa Ana. And then also, I don't know if, if.
Excuse me, Dawn. I'm sorry, your time is up.
I just want to thank so much. So thank you.
Thank you. We have Manny Escamilla.
Cool. Hello, everybody. So I guess good to see everybody all in this virtual room together. So former Arts and Culture Commissioner, and I know that, let's see, oh my gosh, John Spiek was in here somewhere. Don't know if he's still on, but still, as far as I know, with Grand Central's over there in their director's circle and over with the McCarran Center for the Arts, and still trying to stay involved with the arts here locally. I just actually wanted to publicly comment on one of the items that's up for debate today, which is just really about the process and procedures for permit approvals. And I just wanted to ask the commissioners here and staff to potentially consider moving towards a model where maybe one or two days in designated places and locations. The city might be looking to subsidize or at least waive fees for all permits related to arts and culture activities. So, you know, if we do have an arts and culture on the first Saturday of every month, that that would be an opportunity to bring, you know, streamlined permitting across the city. And, you know, maybe having a month delay. I think Bill, you look really good there with the shirt. Good to see you there, man. Yeah, always smile on the face. And I know how much work it is to do these sorts of things. But if we can figure out a way to support staff and basically streamline that permitting, you know, obviously keeping it to proper scale, making sure that there are no life and safety issues with those types of events. But looking to really encourage people all across the city to have arts and culture events on that first Saturday, the second Friday, you know, again, whatever it is that we end up deciding to do. I think that that would be one way that we can naturally encourage the creativity of the community to come out, and that it would be a way to democratize the availability of public spaces. So again, I very much encourage the city and the commissioners to look at that. There's a lot of open questions. I think that this is just a really great opportunity to brainstorm some of those ideas. And I do hope that we move in that sort of direction to make it easier for, you know, budding nonprofits, budding community groups, or just, you know, three people coming together to try to create an event, so that we make it easy and welcoming for that sort of thing to happen in the city. Because I think that's where we get the most benefit and the most amount of creativity to be kind of put out there. So that's all I have to say for now. As always, I wish you all the best. Look forward to hearing the meeting here. And I will now be turning off video and listening to everyone else.
Thank you, Manny. Okay. We have Adriana Yasmin Martinez.
Yes, hello. Hello, hello.
Go ahead, Adriana. We can hear you.
Can you see me?
Yes.
Oh, I can't see myself. Anyways, yes, my name is Adriana Martinez, and I'm an artist. Been participating in downtown for a while now, part of Art Walk, have done stuff with Downtown Inc. What I have to say is mostly about Art Walk and everything that has been going on. I've been keeping up with the meetings. It's been very difficult for me to understand, first of all, what Ryan even really does. I feel like he takes credit for a lot of the work that, first of all, Yanni was doing with Art Walk, but also all the stuff that the artists contribute. And so that has been a big problem for me to watch that happen. And I have to speak against it because one of the reasons that we stand behind Jenny is because she doesn't take credit for all of the work. She understands her role within the community. And this is why we enjoy working with her. Also, it's been very hard to work with Downtown Inc. because of the motives behind Ryan. It's always been kind of questionable. And Yanni has made it, you know, made it a point to help us to co-create with them, right? And it was only, it was one of the very few forms to get paid as an artist, really. But a lot of us have not been comfortable. We've made ourselves comfortable with the situation. And it's not so much about Ryan and Downtown Inc. It's more because of the city. I feel like the city has done a lot of things wrong. I feel like it doesn't offer enough opportunities for artists. It makes us feel constantly like we are replaceable. And I have a problem with that because what are, what we do for the city is so important. And without us, there's, without us, it's turning what's, it's turning to now, which is basically like a drunk walk. And I don't feel safe in the city. I don't even feel like participating anymore. And I feel like the artist is what brings the balance into the city. When I originally came to the city, it was so filled with art. It really inspired and motivated everything that came after my whole career, everything. And I wish that we can maintain that for people to still come and feel inspired. But unfortunately, not only did we lose the Centura Building, but now we're losing Art Walk. And it's really sad to see. And so I just wanted to speak on the subject, speak up for Jenny, because she is constantly not giving credit for her work. The other day, in the beginning of these meetings, Tram didn't even include her comment. And she has submitted a comment. And so I don't understand what agenda Tram and certain people have against Jenny, when she has constantly defended artists, you know what I'm saying? So that's just the comment that I wanted to save to bring to light some of the stuff that is, people are acting like they have amnesia or something like that, because they're not giving credit where credit is due. And not only with Yanni, but like I said, the community of artists that have been involved for a very long time. And so, hi to everybody. And thank you for those who are fighting for the rights of artists, but also for fighting for the integrity of the city, because it is about art and culture and community. And this is what we're pushing for. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. We have John Spiek.
Go ahead, John.
Everyone, sorry about that. It took me a second to click over. Originally, I was going to talk about last night's meeting and Art Walk and concepts about that. But following these individuals, I think I'm going to shift what I'm going to say and be briefer and maybe save that for a conversation with the ad hoc or at a future meeting. But Adriana, like your comments right now are spot on. I think Yanni, watching that shift when Yanni started coordinating the Art Walk, the quality went up, the engagement with community went up. I mean, the performances were incredible that were taking place at the end of the thing. And she was, she's always there on the ground. And, you know, being at Grand Central, there were, we would always hear like, oh, something happened, this and that. And she was always taking care of it. So I just want to give kudos out to her. I gave some kudos last night in the meeting too. But I really know that she's on the ground and her heart's in the right place. And, and that transition over the last summer of how they transitioned her out of that position, I think was unfortunate. So I just want to state that. and that transition over the last summer of how they transitioned her out of that position, I think, was unfortunate. Um, so I just want to state that. Uh, Alicia, like, you're rocking it, and it's amazing, and it made me think, especially with what Mike's doing as well with OSA, which love you guys and buy fireworks from your stand every year. Um, the Arts Commission might be able to leverage a relationship with Bear Paint. Uh, I was thinking about this as a sponsor. Um, you know, they have every single paint product in the world, and they're based here in Santa Ana. So that seems like it's a great leverage for mural projects or or just financial support of the city and the arts because it is a paint product and, you know, they are this nationally international paint company. It could be a really great partnership. Sarah, Breath of Fire, unbelievable with what you're doing and the way you guys rocked during the pandemic. Kudos to that because, I mean, you've taken yourself to extreme national recognition um that you so well deserve. So congratulations on that. Uh, Nancy, I'm super excited to hear that Baca Dance is really active in Santa Ana now. And I would also say, um, I know you're at El Salvador Park, but you should also look at Jerome Park, um, because I think they have amazing dance studios over there, and their senior center is huge as well. So there's opportunities, but they have really beautiful dance spaces over there. Um, I remember touring that with Manny years ago, and it was fantastic. And wooden floor, I mean, you guys just continue to rock it. So um when she says professional costumes, if you've ever seen this video that they did at the Red Cat with these puppets and this young boy like carrying this puppet like it weighs a thousand pounds on his back uh through dance movement, it's an unbelievable video to watch. And I mean, how fortunate Santa Ana is to have uh wooden floor in this city. And uh, and then I just, Manny, I can't say enough. Manny has been one of our most collaborative partners when he was with the History Room at the library, um, working on the Rates, uh, the Rate Street Projects that we did together. And the Time Capsule that will all open in two thousand twenty-four that, you know, when I originally said a ten-year time capsule, I thought it wasn't going to be that much change. But man, how much Santa Ana has changed in the last ten years. So I think that in time capsule is going to be kind of amazing. Um, but Manny, Oakland's overrated, so get back here. And that's all I want to say at this point. I'll I'll mention some stuff about the the Art Walk at another meeting, or if the ad hoc wants to talk to me, I would love to just have a conversation. So thanks for all that you guys are doing. You guys are amazing uh as an arts commission. It's exciting to have this energy and uh to move forward. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. And we don't have any more public speakers.
Okay. With no public speakers, we're gonna go to the consent calendar. Uh, this is uh the time for the commission to consider matters under consent. Uh, item one, two, I think we're fine. We basically go to our minutes. Okay? Do any members have any corrections to the minutes? Items they wish to pull for separate discussion or abstain on?
Point of order, do we have to have a vote on the items one and two on the consent calendar?
I guess we do, both uh together as one.
As one. So.
I so move that we approve the consent calendar as is.
Thank you, Robin.
Consider, exactly. Robin gives us a motion to consider. Have a second? Who gives a second?
I second.
Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you, Deborah. Being so, we're gonna move into our business calendar.
Excuse me, Frank, we still need to um vote individually, and I'll call the names and you say aye so that we can pass item.
Okay.
Okay. Frank Gutierrez?
Yes.
Robin McNair?
Yes.
Fernando Olivares?
Yes.
Jose Hernandez?
Yep.
Deborah Russell?
Yes.
Indigo Boo? Andrea Harris?
Aye.
Thank you. We pass.
Thank you. We're gonna move into our business calendar. Uh, we will not consider matters under business calendar. Uh, the first item on the business calendar is item number one. The election of officers for the Arts and Culture Commission for twenty twenty-one term. So it's gonna go to a special section down here. It says, "I am opening the election of officers at this time. If there is more than one nomination for an office, we shall vote by ballot. The floor is now open for nominations for chairperson." Are there any nominations?
I'd like to, I'd like to make a nomination for Robin.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Second?
Uh, Deborah.
Do we have to have seconds or just nominations?
We have to have, we have to have a second. We have a nomination. We have a second to.
Well, if Andrea nominated Robin and then once um if there are no other nominations or if you want to nominate yourself, um, we can move on to uh voting. And we can do a motion and then a second so we can pass. And if Robin accepts the chair position, then we move on.
I would like to nominate um Commissioner Hernandez.
I couldn't hear you.
Can you?
It was like blurry.
But to clarify, Bianca, we don't have, uh, the commissioners don't have to second a nomination, correct?
Correct.
Can you hear me now?
It's a little muffled, Commissioner.
A little muffled?
A little muffled, yeah.
Uh, what if I just speak louder? Does that work?
Yes, that's good.
Okay. Um, I would actually like to nominate um Commissioner Hernandez.
Hernandez.
Do we have any other nominations? If there's no other nominations, the nominations will be closed. Okay? So at this moment, I motion that the commissioner. So we're gonna take a vote on consensus about who we're gonna nominate between Hernandez and Robin. Bianca?
Um, to clarify, um, Commissioner, well, you said that you would nominate Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Okay. So um okay, so for Robin, for Commissioner McNair, um if you can raise your hand, let me know if you vote for Robin. Uh, I'll call the name and then you can let me know. Andrea?
Yes.
One vote. Deborah?
Yes.
For Robin?
Yes.
Uh, Frank? Who do you vote for?
Can you hear that again?
Who do you vote for, Fran, uh, Robin or Jose?
Oh, for Jose.
Jose? Commissioner Boo?
I got to vote for Commissioner Hernandez.
Thank you. Commissioner Olivares?
Uh, yes, for Robin.
Thank you. Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Hernandez?
Uh, myself.
Thank you. And Commissioner McNair?
Myself.
Thank you. So the tally is Robin is four votes and Jose three votes. Did you hear me, Frank?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Rob, Robin will be the next commissioner.
Chair.
Next chair? Okay.
Bianca?
Yes.
You there?
Yes, I'm here.
Pam there?
I'm here. I can hear you.
Pam, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, chair.
I'd like to thank the opportunity of serving you, okay, and the city of Santa Ana. Okay, I've been commissioner for eight years for the cities, and I've gone through this process. At this point in my life, I do not have time to be investing, okay, in a direction of something that I've been involved with more than thirty years in art business. So thank you, and I'm, I am technically resigning, and I am leaving the meeting. Thank you.
Uh, Frank?
Yes.
Um, you actually can finish the meeting and the new chair will take effect um August first.
Okay.
You can continue running the meeting um this last meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. And then we can vote for uh vice chair.
Yes.
Any nominations for vice chair?
I nominate Commissioner Hernandez.
Thank you.
I'll second that if if it's needed.
Thank you, Commissioner Olivares. To uh Commissioner Boo?
Yes, I I agree with this. I vote for him.
Thank you. Commissioner McNair?
Hey, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Thank you. And Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Thank you. So we all voted, everyone voted for Commissioner Hernandez as the vice chair.
Okay, so we're gonna move forward. And we are moving now to our work-study session.
Excuse me, sorry, Frank, um, just so that we can vote that Commissioner McNair will be the new chair and Commissioner Hernandez will be the new vice chair. Um, do I have a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I second. Third.
Who's second? I'm sorry?
Andrea.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes, I'll second it.
Thank you. Um, and then I'll just take a roll call real quick. Uh, Frank Gutierrez?
Yes.
Robin McNair?
Yes.
Fernando Olivares?
Yes.
Jose Hernandez?
Yes.
Deborah Russell?
Yes.
Indigo Boo?
Yes.
Andrea Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. We pass, and now we can move on.
Okay, so our work-study session follows. We have two items under the work-study session. Please note that there will be no motion or action taken on these items. The first item of the work-study session calendar is the presentation of the city permit process for events. He's gonna give us a presentation.
Uh, well, good evening, everyone. My name is William McGovern, and I'm with the Santa Ana Police Department. Uh, my office is located in City Hall on the first floor of the Annex near the the permit counter. Uh, one of my functions is to help applicants uh through the permit process for use of public property. Now, the city has a a process for park reservations. The city also has a process for uh temporary outdoor events on private property. My scope is for use of public property such as streets and sidewalks that the city has control over. Um, one of the activities I'm sure you're familiar with is the First Saturday Art Walk. That is just one of of several uh use of public property uh activities that go through my office. Um, sometimes we have things as small as a birthday party or a a block party uh in a in a neighborhood for Fourth of July, or sometimes we have things as large as uh a concert with a built stage and ten thousand plus people. But the process is the same, and now that COVID has subsided to the point where the the state reopened outdoor activities, our office is once again uh reviewing and permitting these outside activities. The process isn't perfected, and we're always trying to improve. Uh, the Parks and Recreation Department is working diligently to combine all three of the uh permit processes so that they follow the same reservation system. Uh, we'll, we'll all still be involved. Uh, and that hopefully will be implemented by the end of this year. Um, currently, we we trust in our partners at the Orange County Fire Authority to also review these uh uh activities for safety. Uh, also, our partners with the Health Department, anytime there's food distribution or food sales or a food-centric event, they will make sure that uh proper food handling techniques are uh part of the conditionings of approval. Um, an applicant who wishes to have uh an activity on public property, they are responsible for uh paying the costs, the application fee, the insurance, uh, the proper traffic control plan uh and barricades. And if there's a need for security or police on overtime, they're responsible for those costs as well. But those brief bullet items, is there anything I can, any questions I can ask or answer uh from the commissioners?
What's the typical timeline? Thank you so much, by the way, for this presentation. This is very helpful. So what's the typical timeline if if I wanted to get it go and get a permit to use for use of public space um from the time that I apply to the time that I get the permit? And also, what what are the insurance requirements?
So uh with Parks and Recreation, they have a codified forty-five day timeline. Uh, in our municipal code for public property, we ask for thirty days. Uh, but sometimes, depending on the scale of the event and the the amount of review and revision, it could take longer. Um, so at a minimum, we want thirty days. Many times, we get things that the same week, and it's very hard to turn that around, but we endeavor to work with the applicants and and try to, you know, find common ground on that. Now, the um the uh insurance requirements are dictated a formula. They have a usually right now for bigger events, it's like a two million dollar coverage. Um, but uh they have a outside source that people can can work through for one-day events. Usually, a a uh a policy to cover an event for a day is probably a hundred or a hundred and fifty dollars that they can source on their own. Uh, none of those fees go to the city. The city just makes sure that the policy uh, you know, indemnifies the city of Santa Ana so that there there's no risk of liability. Helpful?
I have a question. Um, I know that costs now um as the city has reopened have gone up, and I was wondering if you could explain um the the reasoning behind such an a steep increase. Um, and then maybe possibly to address Manny Escamilla's comment or suggestion that the city consider some events to be um uh the permit fee would be waived or subsidized in some way.
Well, I I can't comment necessarily on the fees being waived because I don't have the power to waive any fees. Um, I know that when that subject came up uh several city managers ago, they uh they were, they developed a uh city council discretionary fund. So i- each council member had a discretionary fund. They could contribute towards some of their, you know, uh, closest uh uh events that they wanted to help support. Um, but I know that, you know, the cost of labor for police overtime or for Parks and Recreation staff that ness- can't necessarily be absorbed by the city for a privately produced event. So those are, those are things and and uh determinations that have to be done on, say, council level, and that's way above my office. Um, and I think I answered one of your questions. What was the other one?
If you could explain why the fee increase was so steep.
Sure. So I I came into this office seven years ago, and the fee probably eight or nine years ago started off at about a hundred and forty dollars. And I think that represented uh the hours of time for one person in the office to go through that process. And and then every year with the miscellaneous fee schedule, it would go up. Uh, but sometimes uh processes change and more people become involved. So in this, this. So in this, the seven years that I've been here, more and more people from more and more departments are involved in this review process. We hold weekly meetings with members from Public Works Traffic and from Finance and from the Fire Authority. So this review process takes a little bit longer and involves more work time. So the fees were adjusted for the 2020 fiscal year. And then COVID hit, so no one really realized how much the fees went up. So it's been codified in the miscellaneous fee schedule, and it's been carried over to this latest one, the 2021-2022 miscellaneous fee schedule. And we've broken down the cost of the activity based on population or attendance. So if you want to create a small event with less than 100 people, you're paying the lowest amount. If your activity is gonna be between 100 and 1,000 people, you're gonna be paying, you know, a bit more. And then if your event, like many, are over 1,000, you're gonna be paying the highest amount. So we've, as we're breaking this in, we're trying to keep some consistency with other permits in our system, and as long as the event is, if there's a repetitive event that recurs on a monthly basis, like the Art Walk, as long as we can review it once and replicate it, we'll do it up to six times for that same application fee. But if there's changes, if there's changes involved, and we're bringing the team back together and the Fire Authority and the Health Department, then we have to consider it kind of like a new event.
Last question, I'm just wondering if you know how Santa Ana compares to, let's say, a sister city or a nearby city like Tustin? Are we comparable in terms of those permit fees, or are other cities maybe more attractive in terms of their fee costs?
I don't know, I don't know the other cities' fees, and I don't know that we've lost activities to other cities. We really don't make a lot of money on activities other than parking revenue or, you know, when a staff fee is paid, it's really just going directly to the costs of that employee for, like, police overtime. So the city general budget isn't making money on these events. It's, the city's not acting as a promoter and profiting. That's, that's what I've seen in the last seven years.
Since we have several people, several community members on the call, could you actually state the cost for the fee for the population of the event?
So I have, from the miscellaneous fee schedule, on page 91, the street closure permit. So for a small event with less than 100 people, the application fee is $272.12. The application fee for a medium event, which is 100 people to 1,000 people, is $816.35. And the application fee for a large event that's over 1,000 people is $2,721.15.
I have one more question, if no one else.
Sure.
So, no, you stated that the city doesn't really benefit from events because of the cost of coordination, but I've heard that the parking revenue, when there is a large event, let's say over 1,000 people, is substantial in the downtown, and it seems like the city does benefit, and small businesses or businesses in the area benefit. Is that not a part of the calculation?
Well, I do agree that parking revenue does benefit, and that there is even an enhancement for a large-scale event. They'll raise the price for a special event rather than have it go hourly. But that's not the driving force in having events. I think, I think these, it's my understanding that these use of public property has been put in the municipal code for decades as a way for people to have access to the public space, but also not take away that public space from public use. So it's a balance. But I don't believe that they consider events to be a revenue source.
So can I ask a quick question here? So you're talking about, like, so for Art Walk, because we're having over 1,000 people, you're talking about charging, right now it's Downtown Inc., you're charging them $2,721 per permit that they're pulling for Art Walk?
No, we'll assess how many people are there, like, on an hourly basis. Is it 1,000 people every hour for the six hours or seven hours that they're in operation? Or is it more, a couple hundred people? You know, less than 1,000 people from six to seven, less than 1,000 people from seven to eight? I think you've got, you know, some people don't stay all day. So I think we're looking at the medium-sized event, and then that's gonna be for six dates. Because we'll do up to six dates in a six-month period.
Okay, and.
As long as it's consistent.
If one of our nonprofit organizations wanted to have an event, and we're looking at, you know, charitable organization who's coming out to do something that's gonna benefit the community, it's gonna benefit the profile of the city of Santa Ana, it's gonna benefit the property owners, it's gonna benefit the businesses, it's gonna benefit our youth, it's gonna benefit everybody, and they're a nonprofit, would there be some sort of way to underwrite, like she was saying prior, what Deborah was saying, underwrite those fees? Because most people aren't doing these events as moneymakers, if they're doing a flea market or some sort of an event for themselves, but most of the people are coming out to do this for the community. It's to help bolster the community and help make this, you know, this city a home. So people want to live here and have property here and thrive here. And so having the city as a partner seems like it would be a better fit. I know when I was at Grand Central, the city would help us with permitting when we would do our events on the promenade. And I think that that's very appropriate, especially since, you know, you're dealing with nonprofit organizations who are about education. So it'd be nice to see if there's some sort of a mix. Maybe you have to do this for outside event groups, but maybe when you're dealing with your own nonprofits, say, the Wooden Floor wants to do something, or say, you know, Oka wants to do something or whomever, then we have, that's our family. I mean, that's who we, that's, those are our people. So if they're not from the outside, can we do something for them on the inside to make them feel welcome to book events?
You're more than welcome to bring that up to the city council.
Okay.
They're the ones who have to codify this in the municipal code. And right now, when they didn't do that, like I said, the city, the former city manager set the city council members up with annual discretionary budgets, and they could determine who they wanted to support, what things were most important to them to underwrite. But other than that, I can't, I can't speak to, you know, that type of, you know, who gets what, you know, underwriting.
Okay.
I have a question. So it stands that, well, one question is like, how do you, how do you, how do you, like, count the number of folks that are, you know, perhaps like a part of Art Walk, given that Saturday is already, you know, a busy day for the downtown, and there's already, like, pre-scheduled or perhaps, you know, just assigned police officers, and a lot of them, you know, in that area? So there's a lot of overlap is what I'd say. So like, how do you differentiate or like, what crowd is for what event? And, you know, and, you know, and why you would even need any more than what is actually there as far as police presence?
I, I'm just going by kind of the assessment from, from the officers that are there. Are we thinking that we're overcharging Art Walk?
Well, just, you know, in trying to figure out what ways we can, you know, you know, as you mentioned, these, you know, this are the costs, and you're not, the city or you, or the police department isn't making more money off of this, it's just paying for time, but like, there's already events happening every Saturday, you know, or, you know, just a lot of people walking around. So, you know, just kind of, just seeing how we can consolidate costs based on what's already happening is the one question, yeah. And the other question is because, you know, potentially perhaps, you know, other folks might be interested in doing Art Walk-like events. So like, how, you know, how would, you know, could, could there be two Art Walks in one day? Or could there be another Art Walk event on another day, not the one that Downtown Inc. has run?
Yeah, we discussed that before, that there would be multiple, like a day event for families and for kids and things, and then an evening event, so there is gonna be multiple things going on. And as we know, we're gonna be funding some of that through monies that come in through the Arts Commission, and I just don't want to see that money be like a full circle. It comes from the city, and it goes up and back and back into the city, because that's not serving the community. I want to see our money go as far as possible to give back and serve the community, not go to permits and fees. So I think we need to think about this and maybe talk to our council and also get this conversation going a little further. I think Manny's right, I think, you know, we need to do more for our community.
But could you answer that question, Sir McGovern? Would you, would it be a potential for us to put in, for another community group to have a Art Walk event earlier or on another day named Art Walk?
Well, I mean, I suppose so, but it would be kind of confusing. If you, you know, you've got one group having Downtown Santa Ana First Saturday Art Walk. So another group comes in and wants to call it what?
Noche de Arte, Community Art.
Okay, well, that's completely different. Anyone can come in and with an application and show us what they want to do, and if there's not a conflict, yes. I suppose you could call it whatever you want, but I mean, I wouldn't recommend two different things with the same name. That's just, that's just me and my party planning. You know, you don't want to confuse your customers in that regard. So but yeah, you're free, you're free to put it on an application. And it goes through the process just like everyone else's.
I think you're next, Commissioner Wu.
Thank you, Commissioner Russell. Do you happen to know the old fee schedule by any chance? If not, I can, I can look for it.
Well, the old fee from when?
Prior to this recent increase in 2020.
Yeah, yes, it was about $168.68, and it didn't differentiate between small and large. So the hours we were putting into, hours and days we were putting into meetings and more meetings with groups like the OC Block Party, we were charging them the same as a small neighborhood day party. It just didn't make any sense. It was a lot of public resources going out to a private vendor for research and permitting that wasn't being captured.
Thank you, and I have just one other question, but especially one that you mentioned for the city council members. Do you know if that's still active?
I believe it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have one short comment, which is, I believe we have, have actually lost an event. I don't know exactly the circumstances, but Patchwork used to be in the downtown, and it used to be hosted, I think, twice a year, and it has moved to Tustin. And so I just want to acknowledge that, you know, we'd have to do some more digging there to understand fully that, but it does concern me that we have these community events, and they might be leaving us for different reasons.
Definitely.
Okay.
Patchworks and Pins is coming to, still coming to downtown, right?
That, that's Patches and Pins, as opposed to the Patchwork Show.
I see, I see.
And Patchwork Show was here for many years, and then COVID closed part of it down, and then some of the fees, I think, were difficult for them to balance out.
It concerns me that, you know, cities like Tustin, not to say Tustin, but that we would lose some really powerful and important cultural, craft-oriented artistic events to neighboring cities when they really originated and were generated, right? Here and got all that popular, because now I think the organization is like a statewide, it's a statewide arts fair.
Yeah, and if I may, I do want to voice out that, I mean, what, like Andrea said, it doesn't make a lot of sense how the fees are so low, especially if our budget is really low, as it is already. So to have a little budget and then have those costs go back to the city, doesn't make much sense. If we want to sponsor a real community event, not a vendor event, not a, you know, a for-profit event.
Right.
So I do, I do, I would like to see some of those waves, some of those fees waived for real community events.
Deborah, do we have any other points to bring up?
Just a question about to TRAM or our support team. What is the process that we would have to go through to be able to, like, make an appeal to the city council or the city manager in terms of fee structures? And some of the considerations that the city manager has made in the past? What, how would we do that as a commission, be able to take action?
Bill, do you happen to have any insight on that? You've been here for a while.
I do not. I would say catch the ear of any one of the council members and see if they and staff can bring it up in discussion.
Do we have any other comments? Commissioners?
No, thank you so much for being here and presenting.
You're welcome. All right, I'm gonna go to my next appointment.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If that is so, we're gonna go to the second item on the work-study session calendar is discussion of the Santa Ana Community and Arts Culture Survey. Fran, do you have that?
I believe on the staff report, it says that this is something to help with the community. So if anybody'd like to start the discussion on how you would like to move forward with either talking about the process of developing this survey or any questions you want to throw out, and what would you like to receive back from the community? You know, that might help. So if you want to start that discussion, and ultimately, if you want, you can create a subcommittee too, so you can have this discussion offline. But if you want to lay some ground rules first, or just have that foundation, so everyone's on the same page now, then we can start talking about it.
I would like to start real quickly just by saying that I think this, having a survey for our community is critical because right now, it seems as if we're constantly trying to re-educate and convince people that the arts and culture in the city are essential. And it's frustrating because we have a long history of proving through many, many years that this is a huge part of Santa Ana, and it has bolstered Orange County in general. And, you know, regionally, we've, we've put on the map because of arts and culture and internationally. So I think we need to have a survey with actual numbers, with actual comments, with things that we can control and we can go out and collect to share with our city council, our mayor, our city staffers, so that they understand the importance of this. Because sometimes when we're talking about this, it seems like it's negligible, or they're just like brushing it off, and I'm, I don't want to see that happen. It's gotta be something where we show them facts and figures, and we have lists of people who have signed in, who have given us their feedback, and have said, you know, arts and culture are essential, we want to see these type of events, these type of things happening in our city, and we will attend. And then showing them those attendance numbers, and also at those events, getting more material and more feedback from our community. Because I want this to just be, I want it to be so powerful that they will understand that they just can't turn away from funding the arts and culture in the city of Santa Ana, and that when the budget is up each year, that we are right there at the top of importance for them to consider. So I think this survey is essential, and people do want to make their, make themselves known and their support known. I'd like, if we can do something digital and also something that's hand-done, that we can go and walk around and talk to the public, like on tablets, you know, for like an Apple tablet, and also have a thing we can send out online. like an Apple tablet and also have a thing we can send out online where people can go like they did the survey for Revive Santa Ana, do something that's online as well.
Commissioner Vu had her hand up, had had their hand up before me.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Vu.
Uh, thank you. Um, I I definitely think that we need a a survey um imminently and immediately. And this is partially because um technically, the city has not finished the budget discussions on either the Santa Ana Revive money or the um it's the exact allocation for the following year budget. Um, and so I think we need to know exactly what direction it is that we're going to take um with the only currently a hundred thousand dollars that we have so far. Um, I definitely have um brought it up with council member Fan. Um, and I hope that you all have brought it up with your respective appointees as well. Uh, what it is that we should be doing, how much money we should be getting, why it is that this money is less than what we had fear previous to our respective appointments. Um, and how that puts us at a serious disadvantage to consider and be able to fund effectively arts and culture within the city of Santa Ana. Um, in terms of a particular question, um, that might be um helpful. Um, I I would probably frame this survey starting with, you know, one to five or one to seven scale at the beginning. Um, how involved have you been? How have you attended events um relating to arts and culture um in Santa Ana before in the past three years? Three years to account for the pandemic as well. Um, have your attendance gone down during the pandemic? Um, what is it that you uh would like to see more of in the city? Um, and what would you like to see in in terms of city sponsored events? Um, those are my suggestions for where to start in terms of survey question.
Do you have any other comments?
Yes. Um. So just to underscore and and thank everybody for what they've said so far, and I'm in alignment with that. I am curious, how do we? Because the the bottom line is data speaks, and I think that's what we need to show is the data to especially people who are not non arts, because unfortunately sometimes we get relegated as fluff or they don't see the economic impact. And I would like to offer again that we sit in the US Creative Economy Capital. We offer jobs and create pipelines into industries. So we need to be getting that information. I know we have some resources that could help inform that and once again, provide a report on the economic impact of the arts on Santa Ana or what they were compared to now and how do we bring that back to see what we've lost? So maybe some of those things could be included. But in terms of the survey, I would like to figure out how do we reach everybody? Because we have a certain active community, but there are so many people who don't even know what's going on. And I feel like it's almost got to be like a door to door campaign like um Commissioner Harris was talking about knocking on people's doors to get real feedback because part of what our purpose is is definitely to support artists and the arts community and also the community who would come to participate in the arts that the artists create and and provide an audience and have informed um consumers, if you will. So I suggest that we create a uh a committee that comes up with questions that we can bring back. And to Commissioner Vu's point, though, we have to do this really fast. So I I I recommend that we come up with a team that would be able to come up with some generate some questions and get good data points and perhaps find some other uh people in the community that could help us identify some good questions that we should be asking for. What is the data that we really need to have? Right?
Yeah, I I second that idea by Commissioner McNair as far as um creating creation of a committee. Um, and and perhaps that was one of the the questions that I had or, you know, just kind of thought process that I'm going through with this. Right? So um this the development of of the survey and you know, perhaps for various reasons, but one one reason being it's like, what do we do with the hundred thousand that it seems, you know, we're slated to receive? But then potentially, you know, we we will have more money coming in from the revised Santana money that has yet to be really codified. And if folks watched the last council meeting, there was a lot of back and forth and ultimately there was a lot of vague kind of numbers thrown out there without real detail uh that could, you know, could perhaps out, you know, highlight where this money could particularly go and and in particular to the Arts and Culture Commission. Um, so that's that gives us an opportunity still to to lobbying. And I know I went to the last council meeting, like spoken with individually with the mayor and council members, and there seems to be a lot of, you know, interest and support for it. But it's just a matter of, you know, just really putting it or writing, right? Um, but yeah, so I I'm I'm totally in in favor of of us creating uh an ad hoc committee so that we can get that uh conversation going. Uh, you know, and of course, with that, making sure that it's language inclusive, right? So having it in Spanish and Vietnamese. And I agree with with other commissioners, Lu and Russell on on uh the need to for it to to be to be able to be shared in different ways on 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 Facebook, on on, you know, Instagram, social media and so on. Um, but you know, if there were to be a door to door, you know, kind of effort, which I agree is something that is would we one way to do it is that's, you know, where would the money come from basically, or who would go for it or would be that would be something that we would be tasked with that as a commission uh to perhaps find volunteers to go and and do this on the weekends or whenever. So it's those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have.
Any other comments?
Yes, um, I just want to uh share one piece that um I definitely like the idea of 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 capturing um those who have participated in the arts in the past. But um I know that I have invited many people to downtown Santa Ana for our walk, and it was their very first arts experience ever as a family or you know, and so I I would I wouldn't want to create a survey or a data collection tool that maybe made people feel a little bit intimidated by that idea. Um, and then secondly, um, you know, as part of um groups, volunteer groups uh that have done surveys for for murals, for instance. Um, I think that it's very helpful sometimes to offer ideas. And um I think uh, you know, I've been at a lot of arts events before where I'd never thought about making puppets out of newspaper and masking tape, for instance. Um, and then I went to the um the children at the little uh Migos event and saw how amazing it could be. I never if someone had asked me prior to that event, I never would have said, oh, puppet making with newspaper. So you know, I think we want to create a survey tool that sort of allows for those that open ended kind of thinking. Um, and la- my last part is I also want to encourage all our arts organizations in Santa Ana um to join our our arts and culture meetings and share the work you're doing. I don't think we're fully aware of all that's happening um and all the different possibilities that are there. Um, so I want to thank those who came tonight. I thank those who um who left early um because they had other obligations and encourage all of the commissioners to invite the arts organizations that you're connected with or in your wards um to do the same so that we are more aware about what's going on so that can form the um allocation of that hundred thousand.
Any other comments?
I just want to say that um I think that we can get our our nonprofits, our different various different community organizations to get involved in the survey and to send it out to their lists, to get it out to the wards, to those people who lead the different wards in the community, send it out to their community members. I think through the schools, we can get out to the youth, to the kids and have them and we'll and we can create something that's really, it's not threatening type of thing. It's just we want them to help us uh be more um inclusive in their voice be heard. So we want to give them a platform. And so I think people like to be a part of something where they get to actually, you know, curate the future of Santa Ana and work with artists and creative uh ideas. So I think we can make it really a pleasant survey, but something that we really bring together for the city. Because I think the city council, the mayor, the manager, uh, the city manager all can use this to help them justify their decision making processes. They'll see this and that will be very, very helpful. Um, especially if we have our main nonprofits on board. Um, and they're also supporting this because that's our, again, this is our, this is our communities, our people. And so if we all come together, it's going to make a difference. It'll make an impact. And I think we will get more money and we will be able to do more for our city.
Thank you. Do you have any final comments?
Uh, yeah, I have a comment.
Yes.
Um, yeah, so we you know, I I took this position and and, you know, because we work for the people. So we want um, we want everybody to be heard. Um. So I feel it. It is important to go out there and do this survey. And if we're gonna, if I I I'm I'm willing to volunteer myself if we need to go door to door. Um, I'm in I'm in downtown San Ana all the time, um, almost every day. So more than willing to do that for sure. But yeah, um, like I think also you mentioned, Commissioner, also you mentioned that we should do it in different languages. Uh, that's something that I I didn't think about until you just mentioned it now. Uh, that is important. And um also have an easy uh uh I'll I'll emphasize that easy survey to do online uh so everybody can do it. And so it's not intimidating like a lot of you said. But uh, I mean, I did my homework. I have my questions. I can share them with you. Um. I I thought we were all supposed to have our questions finalized. Uh, so I mean, we can get moving on the survey right away, right?
Fran? Fernando was asking a question and the survey.
Yeah.
Well, right away?
That's up to you all. So if you want to, you can discuss this survey now or hold it offline. It's up to you.
I think maybe it'd be a good idea for people, I mean, for the commissioners to go ahead and make a list of the questions they want to survey and bring it together and centralize them so everybody could see everything in black and white. Okay, that way, that way, everybody could bring those things together. And then basically you could come to a consensus about what would be a good survey based on those questions.
Can you share Fernando?
My uh, yeah, of course. I I mean, I made I made them simple. Um. I hear a lot of discussion of the art walk and and I see people aren't happy. So that was one of the questions that I had were what are your thoughts on the art walk? Um, uh, what do you want to see future art walks to to be like uh or to focus on? Um, I'll be honest, I have to work on my wording because my, you know, that's not my uh my uh strength. Um, what do you want the arts and what do you want us to focus on? What do you want the Arts and Culture uh commissions to focus on? Um, and what type of art events would you like to see? Um, and I also had here, do you want to see more art events outside of downtown San Ana? And where? So pretty simple. Um, and I'm sure all of you guys have great questions too, and maybe we need to put something together where we can all share these questions and and finalize them.
Yeah, I I I think um and perhaps, you know, the city staff can help with this, but I think we were trying to do this with uh our letter to the, you know, to the council and we ran into Brown Act uh issues. So I that's how I work off of Google Docs and whatnot, but it seems because of that, we can't do it. So then there was a motion on on floor as far as creating a committee. I'm not sure if we're able to to vote on that uh tram, but I think that's, you know, and 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 Fernando, thank you for doing the homework and, you know, perhaps, you know, that's, you know, you would be wanting to join that or or other whoever, but uh that that is thing, or we can discuss it here and formulate it here, but it's I guess it's just a matter of what the rest of my uh colleagues here feel is the best way moving forward.
I think I think the chair can um call for a an ad hoc subcommittee um to create the survey and then uh ask for volunteers who'd like to join.
That'd be crazy.
Um, given the urgency of this, um, if we all did want to part not participate, but it give our input into the possible survey questions. Uh, would it be a violation of the Brown Act for us to send our individual questions first to you, Tram, and then you forward the rest of those questions to whoever gets ends up being on the subcommittee?
Yes, that would be great.
Also, no, that would not be a violation.
It would not be a violation.
Okay.
Send it to me and then I'll compile it. And then when the subcommittee meets, then I can afford it.
That's great. Perfect. It also gives us a chance to meet with some of our local community if they want to add some questions in there because it'd be nice to get their feedback and have some people, we we have people on these this call that was just, you know, they've been giving us insight and have been on the master plan. They might have questions. They'd like to contribute.
And I would add.
That's a good idea. Yes.
I I would just add my comment that um, you know, less is more as far as survey questions. I I see surveys and they're like super long and I I just get over it real quickly. So, you know, ten fifteen multiple choice type of thing. That'd be great. And add a comment box for, you know, notes or other comments for them to, you know, ex- expand.
Definitely. And then the team would need to decide in what format and and how we're going to receive the results of that survey and who's that's going to go to. So there will be some logistics we'll have to consider.
So we'll find a lot. Can we finalize it in in the sense of setting Fran some uh questions so you can then look at them and then go from there? Can we finalize the comments on this? Yes.
Chair, the chair, I believe that there is interest in you um calling for the 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 creation of an ad hoc right now for the survey today.
Yes.
You do want to create a head at this moment? Okay, so that's the issue. Let's go ahead and and create an ad hoc. Who wants to be on the ad hoc? For this.
I'd like to.
Excellent.
I'd like to.
We're gonna have.
Miranda, uh, sorry, Commissioner Olivares.
So we have.
I would like to.
We have three people basically.
Yeah.
Fernando?
Well. Yes.
Yes. Deborah?
Andrea?
Who else?
Robin.
So Robin, who else?
Andrea, Andrea.
Okay. So we have three people on on the on the ad hoc committee. We're in agreement. We move forward with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, great. Okay. So if that is the issue, we're going to come back to our next point here, comments. We have staff member comments. Uh, does the staff have any comments they wish to share with the commission?
Yes, please. Um, I'm going to be sharing with you my uh what's that thing called? My screen. I was going late. Sorry. All right, let me share my screen with you. Uh, here we go, PowerPoint. And share. Okay. So I am okay, so I'm happy to report that we are finally finished with uh phase four of our uh utility box. So yeah, phase four of our utility box art program. So we completed thirty four boxes total. Uh, that's nineteen boxes and nineteen artists um who painted new boxes, fourteen restored boxes from phases one through three. And they all have anti graffiti coating. They all have the Arts and Culture offices decal to uh signify that this is an official uh city saying sanctioned public art piece. Um, six boxes, unfortunately, six boxes have not yet been restored because the artist is either not available to restore it. Uh, they may be out, you know, don't even live here anymore or uh they were not interested in restoring it. So that can be pushed off to uh the next phase. Um, funding, oops, funding, we want to thank so much. Um, it couldn't have happened, especially in that very difficult and challenging COVID time. Um, you know, funding was kind of up in the air, but we uh were able to use some of economic development money. Um, Public Works Agency was very generous. Parks Re- uh Parks Recreation and Community Services Agency also contributed. And finally, uh, very thankful to the Santa Ana Business Council for contributing some funding to the restored boxes um around downtown. And so to go over, you've seen this slide before, but I want just to put it all together for you. These are the ten utility boxes on South Main. Um, and then the uh nine utility boxes on Bristol and North Main. And I have to say, I mean, look at this art, folks. After this project, I I am just so in love with the artists in our community, in our city. It's so diverse. It's so full of joy and brilliance. And I mean, this is right here, this line is our very own Commissioner Olivares. Uh, you don't want to embarrass him, but amazing. And then.
Can you show the slides?
I'm sorry?
Can you show the slides?
Yeah.
Oh, are you not seeing the slide?
Oh. Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Screen, but we're still on the first slide.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, I'm so sorry.
There you go.
There, yes. Okay. Okay, this was the one that you already saw. Sorry, sorry. Okay. So did you see this slide?
Yes.
Okay. Then moving on to this slide, which you saw already, then this slide. Um, yeah, so the uh the lion here, this one is um Commissioner Olivares's art masterpiece artwork. And I als- we also worked with Manny, who was really helpful in helping us um low uh like identify locations that these artwork would be best in. So this one, he recommended that this particular So this one, he recommended that this particular artwork be located near Modern Day because I believe this is their mascot. I'm not sure, like a lion is their mascot or something like that.
Yep, it is.
So, you know, perfect. And then this one is Brendan Roach's artwork, the Philip K. Dick. And this is located near where Philip K. Dick used to, used to live when he was in Santa Ana. And then this, the parrot is Melissa Murphy's, you know, signature work with nature. And, and this is, you know, a very surprising piece too. It's Brianna Negrete's piece about, I believe, the birth of, I can't say the word. I think it's like, some Aztec god. Yes, yes. So it's just so diver, it shows how our community is, you know, so that's why I love it. And then also very proud of our restoration program that was much needed after many years. This one in particular, well, there's 14 boxes that we're able to restore. And that's from all over Santa Ana, not just in any particular area. And from the first three phases. This one's located in Broadway and Third. The artist is Eddie de la Barca. And the title of his, this piece is Eko System. And as you can see, this is the condition of the box before and he dramatically improved it and added neon that can shine with, with black lighting.
Well, I didn't know that.
Yeah, so at night it shines. That's so cool, huh? This interactivity. And then this is another box that can show clearly how over time it just gets dirty and some tagging. And this artist worked with, the original artists are the students from Advanced Learning Academy. Because we worked, in phase three, we worked with Santa Ana Unified School District. And this was one of the boxes where the students worked with an artist. And I believe Catherine was one of those artists that worked with them. And so we, so obviously we can't bring back the students because they're probably not here and it'd be very difficult to locate every single student who worked on it. So we worked with the artist who worked with Santa Ana Unified and she did all five boxes and she meticulously repainted these names again. As you can see, there's a lot of text and writing that she had to work really hard to, to, to transform it from this kind of dingy box to this, you know, bright new box again. So that's it. So that's just to let you know that this program is now done and we can, we're moving forward with other programs. Thank you. That's it. Let me try to stop sharing.
Thank you, Graham. And if that's the last comment on that point, commission member comments? And do we have any, any comments from the commission, commissioners finalized?
I have a comment before we leave. I wanted to thank everybody for being here today. I wanted to thank Frank for his service to the commission as chair. He was there for me when I first started and I feel very, very proud to have been under you and under your lead. So thank you so much for that. And I'm also excited for Robin. She's incredibly a wonderful organizer and visionary. I think she's going to be great. Also, Jose, congrats on the vice position. We're excited to have such a strong team here. I also wanted to say that I've been looking into some different things in the city that I'm going to share with Tram and share with you guys probably in the next couple of weeks, but there's some, some groups in the city, some different buildings, some different opportunities out there that I think we need to talk about as, as representatives of various wards. And so I'm going to propose something to Tram and send it off to you guys that we look at some specific buildings in the city, the uses that are being represented as arts uses or for artists, but actually are not. And try to recontextualize some of the things we are doing because one of the things that I hear from artists and people in the community is they feel like they're just kind of being, you know, used when we need them, propped up when we need them, pushed into things when we need them, but we really don't value our artists as much as we can, that we're not protecting them as much as we should. And so I've been talking with quite a few people, getting some feedback. And so I'm going to put together a little report and send that on to Tram and then hopefully she'll share that with you guys. And we can start to look at how we can really start better representing our artists. And we do have a treasure of incredible artists in the city. We're so fortunate. And so we really need to be giving them their dues. We also need to be giving them financial benefit when they're doing things for the city, when they're doing things for various projects in the city. And also if we're going to use the name, you know, that something is for the artist or it's a housing or building project for artists or for uses of art, then those things need to actually be applicable and they need to actually be art uses or for artists. Because this, this kind of misrepresenting to make it look cooler than it is and using artists to do that is not appropriate. And I don't like a city that does that. And so I want you guys to, to know that I'm, I'm kind of digging in and looking into some things that I think are quite interesting. And hopefully we can make our artists feel better about how valuable they are to us. So thank you guys for everything you do. And I'm so glad to be here in this meeting with you.
Do we have any other comments, commissioners?
Commissioner Bo, go ahead.
Yes, I would just mostly, first of all, congratulations to Commissioners McNair and Hernandez for your new positions as chair and vice chair respectively. And thank you to Chair Gutierrez for your dedication during these last several months and also your previous time on this commission as well. And just for the interest of time, I'd like to just give a really brief update on the art walk ad hoc subcommittee. Because I know that that's honestly just a hot topic in the city right now. We, there was, there have been several meetings. I believe the subcommittee has had five or six meetings already in the past two months and we are in the process of scheduling more. In the past two months, we have completed most of our preliminary research. We've met with the former, with William O'Devren, who presented to us today, giving some information. We've also met with the former art walk coordinator, Yanni Brunel, and public art manager with Arts Council for Long Beach and Deluca. We will be reaching out to other organizations and other experts so that we can further formalize our thoughts and be able to come back to the commission as a whole this September with some recommendations for art walk moving forward. If you were not listed and if we haven't reached out to you and if you want to be considered as part of this, then I strongly recommend that you, to those of you who are listening, send us your thoughts in email. And if we have further questions, we will follow up with you regarding any questions that we have. We are looking for diverse perspectives on where we can move art walk and how we can transform art walk into an event that really meets the needs of everyone who participates in art walk.
Thank you. Any other, any other comments?
Commissioner Russell? Yes, so I want to thank Mike Limone for joining us today. If anyone doesn't know, we are a proud OSEA family in my household. And he mentioned the Purple Unity mural, but I don't think he described that it's the mural that many people see as they enter Santa Ana from the freeway, if they come off of Broadway. And so it's really, I almost consider it this archway into the city of Santa Ana. And I do think they, they don't get, OSEA does not get enough credit for basically creating this like entrance, not just to the downtown, but to the heart of our city. And so I hope all, as many people can join the, the second mural unveiling that he has scheduled whenever that happens. The other, and I want to say it's just a great example of collaborating with artists and possible sources of donation to really bring beauty to our city. I also want to congratulate our new leaders for the ACC. I am very excited to see you all steer us in the right direction and really set a tone that helps us focus on the master plan. And, you know, let's get that done. Let's really, let's hunker down and try to make sure that we make progress on those goals and put the pressure on our city council where it's needed. And then as a last comment, I just want to say, I know we have an artist registry and I don't know exactly how it's managed or who's in charge of it. But I do know it's out of date. And I think as to speak to Commissioner Harris's comment, if we are a city of the arts and as the shepherds of some of these movements, I think we have a responsibility to ensure that our artists are represented and promoted as much as possible. That's something we've heard from other city, people in other cities, how that's a way that they do honor their artists and make sure that small businesses and artists are collaborating. And so I think that's another goal we should pursue. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Commissioner Olivares?
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. Sorry, I had to turn my screen off. I'll make it quick. I am working with a couple of volunteers from our community and I want to give them a little shout out here. Alicia Rojas, Ruby Wu, Lucy Solorzano, Mariana Bruno, Councilman Jonathan Hernandez, Manny Escamilla, Margarita Macedonia, Julie Leopo, Esther Fonseca, Steve Martinez, Gilly Rodarte, an artist, Tricia, Roger, and James. Everybody's working together to restore the murals on Civic Center. Residents know it as La Raza, the La Raza Murals. They're located on Civic Center between Ray and Fairview. These murals turned 30 years old this year. And the community has gone together to work on restoring that wall that's located in the Artisia Pilar neighborhood. As Alicia mentioned earlier, we've already raised 14,000, but we're still looking for more donations. So if, I'll say this slowly so you guys can listen back to it on the recordings. There's a GoFundMe now and it's gofundme forward slash DD F9 E53. Or you can make a check donation to charitable ventures of Orange County. That's charitable ventures of Orange County. In the memo, write down Artisia Pilar Neighborhood Association mural. And the checks get mailed out to 2234 North Pacific Avenue in Santa Ana, California, 92706. Again, I just wanted to mention then that during their votes in their own time to, to restore these, these walls, these murals. And on the side comment, I also wanted to see if we as commissioners can come up with a letter for, to get additional funding as we discussed before. I, I spoke to my councilman, Jonathan Hernandez, and he did mention that we might have some, you know, a good amount of, of funding coming our way. But we need to get together and write a letter to present to our city manager to ask for more funding to fund our master plan for the next, you know, five years. I'm not, that's not where my talent lies. I'm not good at writing letters. So I wanted to see if, if I can get some help from my fellow commissioners.
Thank you, Fernando. Do we have any other comments?
Commissioner Hernandez, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm definitely interested in helping with that. Commissioner Olivares, so you can perhaps touch base later. Yeah, I want to thank Commissioner Frank Gutierrez, I mean, a chair of Gutierrez for his work and for many years of work. You care deeply and passionately about your community. That, that is, you know, a beautiful thing. So we're very grateful for your work and also, you know, congratulating my new chair, Commissioner McNair, not to be Chair McNair. So, oh, and it rhymes. So it works out. And so we are, I want to plug this event that myself with other folks are going to be putting together Corazon de Mariposas and It's Happening Entertainment. And going to be doing Colombia Resistente, una noche de arte resistente en amor, a night of resistance, art and love. And so I'll email that to folks, but there's a Facebook event out there and different ways that you can get connected to it. So yeah, it'll be great just to, you know, show off our local artists that are Colombian, but also highlight the human rights violations and the challenges that are happening there in particular. But, you know, in all places around Latin America, Haiti, and so many other places that, you know, we need to be in solidarity with. And how, how beautiful art is in order to highlight, but also bring healing, you know, awareness. So yeah, I also wanted to make a quick comment on, on some of the, or the progress that we made actually with the, with the ad hoc for the mural guidelines. So we were, we were able to meet a few, several times. And we have concluded our, our edits and now that has gone on to the different departments. I believe the Parks and Rec and, and other departments, Legal Department for the city. So that's going to be able to look at, at the language before it gets brought back to this full commission so that we all can have a robust conversation about, you know, what, you know, what needs to be added or subtracted or so on and so forth. So definitely want to highlight that. And and, oh, and last thing, there's going to be an, an event this Saturday. It's going to be a food distribution and also COVID-19 vaccines at the Mexican consulate from, I believe, 9:00 AM till noon. I believe the city will be there, you know, the mayor, council members. And it's just going to be a very good thing for folks, you know, in their low income that, that still need that money, but also the vaccines. But there's going to be a resource fair and all sorts of different people that are going to be there, I believe, free pampers. So I could also email that to the rest of the commission so that folks can share the word. But Mexican consulate right there on fourth. So yeah, everybody have a beautiful rest of your day and look forward to the next meeting with you. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other comments, we're going to be adjourning this meeting. Any other comments before we adjourn? If that, that is our next, the next regular meeting will be scheduled for August 19th at 5:30. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Night.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Tram.